Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. It is 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Vice Chair Fournier is walking toward the back of the room there. Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Claus here, and County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. We are kicking off today with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fournier, so if you'd please join us.
Pledge allegiance, we take the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair, would you like to proceed with the land acknowledgement?
Sir. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and heared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone toward healing.
Thank you, sir. We have a proposed agenda. Is there any changes to that agenda from this morning? I don't believe so.
No.
Is there a motion regarding the proposed agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Next up is a presentation, Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you, Chair. We are pleased to have with us representatives from the Asian Heritage Coalition, the South Puget Sound Chapter. I believe Lynn Crawley is on her way. Are you interested? Oh, is that Lynn? Well, without further ado, we have Lynn Crawley entering the building.
Come on up, Lynn. We're ready for you.
I'd like to welcome you.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Allow me to breathe some more.
Yeah, take a moment.
Okay, so again, I wanted to say thank you for the honor to be able to represent our Asian Pacific Islanders Coalition, South Puget Sound, Chapter, and also to be here to accept the proclamation from Thurston County. Thank you so much for the honor. As all of you may know, I already mentioned my name, but since earlier the microphone was not working, I wanted to go ahead and to say that, that my name is Lynn Crawley, who is the Chair for the Epic South Puget Sound. As all of you may know, since 1990, the US government has designated the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. And since, of course, then, it has always been recognized as that until 2021, when the designation was renamed to Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders Month, to recognize the greater contribution and influences of all AA and HPI community groups. So I'm really glad to share that with all of you, because even though Epic South Puget Sound hasn't changed our name yet, we are very happy to recognize all of the different constituency groups in our community, and we are going to celebrate this Heritage Month with all of you and the participation of all the different community organizations in town to do that. And it's going to be happening on May 11 at the South Puget Sound Community College Lacy Campus, which is off Sixth Avenue. So I wanted to share that with all of you, and even brought some fire for all of you, if you are interested. I can go ahead and pass that out. Do you mind too? I also have the real happy moment here, because I recognize a few of our communities' members are here. So if I may just pass that out, that would be great. I do want to mention Epic South Puget Sound was formed in 2003 by a team of us, and I happen to be one of the co-founders at the time. And we have been trying to work together to elevate the ANHPI's community's interest in the community. We are a coalition, so that means that we are working in partnership with all the different organizations in town, such as JACL, the Olympia Chinese Association, as well as, you know, the Korean groups, Filipino group. We have a lot of Hawaiians, Samoans, you know, Pacific Islanders also in our communities. So we are really happy to say that we work to empower all of us, because as some of you know, ANHPI are usually more recent immigrants, and they have had the opportunity to enjoy the residency of Thurston County, but sometimes they may not necessarily have the opportunity to participate in public affairs such as this. So we really would like to kind of uplift all of those community organizations' voices by, you know, sharing what the latest with everyone, and also all the resources and public policies that are available to everyone. And for the past few years, we have been working to also establish connections with other community organizations, which are here to help people to learn how to specifically engage because of what I just stated. And those groups, we are really happy to kind of work with them, and also, you know, trying to help people to learn, you know, community engagement really is not that difficult. All we have to do is actually take part and learn from each other. So I wanted to kind of continue doing that, but we also welcome the opportunities to work with everyone who is interested in elevating all of the residents in these communities, because we do have quite a lot of ANHPI, as all of you know, in this community. And we really wanted to be a good host to everyone else, but then we also wanted to be a good, you know, resident that truly can contribute to the welfare of this community. So I thank you for listening and appreciate the opportunity again to accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation of Thurston County for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month was signed into law in 1992, and the month of May was selected to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrant to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to honor the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. And whereas we acknowledge Asian Pacific, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is marked by deeply rooted history, including both proud and painful chapters and significant cultural and systemic barriers, and whereas Washington State has been home to generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders for more than 200 years, contributing greatly to the government, business, arts, sciences, medicine, education, military, and whereas this year's theme, Advancing Leaders Through Innovation, pays homage to the visionaries and trailblazers who have shaped the Asian American and Pacific Islanders' history and continue to influence our collective future. Innovation, resiliency, and pioneering spirit have led to lasting contributions to our nation's economic prosperity, technological advancements, and social political change, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have shared their traditions and rich culture while representing their communities through public service for all citizens, and whereas we commit to the recognition of all Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in Thurston County, Washington State, and the nation, and to providing comprehensive support to this community, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Thurston County hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Thurston County, and encourages all residents to celebrate the accomplishments and sacrifices the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made, adopted this 30th day of April 2024.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Please, come on in.
Please come in.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Is this you like this?
I go first? Three, two, one. Perfect.
I'd like you guys to also join me though. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to have somebody there that'll tell me I don't get any of the hot stuff?
It's open to everyone.
No, but I'm hot. I can't have hot.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I might have to come see you and ask for which one to hot, okay?
We have all kinds of food, so don't worry.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something, Chair? Again, thank you Lynn so much for coming in and just really appreciate your leadership and really promoting your culture. And this is really such a great event. I've had the honor of attending in the past, and it really is such a great community event where there is amazing food, there's, the kids do amazing dances, and just hopefully you can attend on May 11.
Thanks so much. Okay, next up is opportunity for the public to address the board. The Board welcomes comment from the public at our meetings along certain guidelines. And those guidelines include introduce yourself when called and identify the address or area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes. Meeting attendees cannot donate any of that speaking time to other speakers. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, and no remarks about pending land use permits or matters that could come before the Board on appeal. Finally, all materials, written materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of RCW. Thank you for your cooperation on those items. So I have a number of speakers. I'll introduce who's up and then kind of who's on deck, so you can be ready to go, and then we'll go to anyone on Zoom who might want to provide public testimony. You'll be called. You don't need to sign up or do anything in particular. First up is Larry Taylor with Stephen Kern, I believe it is, on deck.
Thank you. I'm Larry Taylor from the Hawks Ferry area. This is a continuing presentation about a proposed roundabout that us over in Ridgeview 1 and Ridgeview 2 are absolutely against. Here's Martin Way and Tudor Road and... I'm drawing the blank right now. Meridian, Meridian. Sorry, thank you. So anyway, we live south and east of this intersection, which has a total of 12 inbound roads, six outbound roads. So I've done a series of letters. The first one was talking about we won't be able to come up Ridgeview northbound and either turn right or left if they put a roundabout in here, because with the current situation, with stoplights, stuff stops and it goes. Of course, it's pretty high volume and then it shuts down. That gives us an opportunity to turn right or left. And Ridgeview North is our main exit and ingress to our neighborhoods. So the first one I, first letter I put out was about that ingress and egress. Well, here is the fifth of five, and this is about safety. And I just wanted to let you know, based on pedestrian safety and cycling safety, it says here from the Federal Highway Administration, it's called PED SAFE. It's one of their programs that, and I quote, "Roundabouts are typically not appropriate for the intersection of two multi-lane roads." And this obviously has 18 total lanes. So that's, well exceeds what they recommend. Then over here, one of the things I say in this letter is Great Britain as an example. So I don't want to just spout things off. I need to show you where I got it. Back in eight years ago, 2015, Britain started taking roundabouts out. Roundabouts out. They had 25,000. And the reason they're taking some of them out, just the ones that are bad, because there's too many accidents, including killing pedestrians and cyclists. So I just want you to take a look at this. Not all roundabouts are created equal. I believe the one they're proposing has too much volume. Now, I know they're going to do a traffic study, but to us, it's rather obvious that even, you know, laypeople can look at this and go, that doesn't look good at all. I mean, we've got another place that, Britain Parkway and Marvin is already a problem, and they had to end up putting in a relief lane. So that helped the problem, but it didn't solve it. It really needs to go back to stoplights, is what the cops told us after someone I know had a pretty bad accident there. And so, but we're going to switch gears. So this is the last of five letters. Now we're doing a petition with seven reasons. We do not prefer to have this roundabout. We actually asked you to stop this roundabout based on the number of converging lanes, low and medium volume streets versus this is a major arterial road. We actually have three roundabouts on Ridgeview Drive already, and we love it because it stops speeders. So, but when you try to put 18 lanes down to a two-lane roundabout, we think that exceeds all safety. But that's just our opinion. I know we haven't seen the traffic study. And the Great Britain example I've already gone over. And if there's a problem with the roundabout, there's a great reluctance to convert them back to stoplights. That Britain has actually put stoplights in the roundabouts to improve safety. That sounds counterintuitive, but what happens is when you're going through a roundabout and you've got so much traffic and pedestrians and cyclists, you end up looking through the cyclists and pedestrians until it's too late, till you're literally on top of them. They've even come up with an acronym that says, sorry mate, I just didn't see you. So that's just an example. So we'll be walking this around starting tomorrow, this petition. We hope to have several hundred signatures fairly quickly. We've got Ridgeview 1, Ridgeview 2, Nisqually Bluff, and Stellacrum Ridge. And I've got people in all four that are going to be walking this around, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Stephen Kern's next. John Pettit on deck.
Hi, Steve Kern, 9645 Regency Loop, Olympia, Washington. So I live across the street from him. I'll tell you, there are approximately 400 houses right now that funnel their traffic either north on Ridgewood Drive or south on Ridgewood Drive, depending on whether they want to get onto Martin Way or get off of Martin Way. So we are the collector's street for roughly 400 homes. Those 400 homes probably generate approximately $2.5 million of taxes. We're all getting charged somewhere between $6,000 and $7,000 a year of taxes. And this particular justification, you know, when intercity transit says, well, this is going to really improve things for people in Thurston County, it sure doesn't help us. You know, I don't know one person that's ever taken the bus out our way. You may say you're being elitist. All I can tell you is that people that live in single-family homes in this entire district, and there's about 400 or 450, don't usually utilize the buses. In fact, speaking about taxes, I mean, a lot of us are irritated that this is even coming up because it seems like a huge waste of taxpayer money. For years, the county has been satisfied with the traffic lighted situation at the intersection of Tudor, Martin Way, and Meridian. That's something that apparently for a long time, intercity transit has wanted to convert this from lighted intersection to roundabout intersection. Well, I'll tell you what, there's not one other roundabout on Martin Way. I mean, you look at how big that road is and how many lanes it is. You know, imagine a roundabout on some other aspect of Martin Way. You just don't see it. So, I mean, a lot of the folks that live in our neighborhood say our taxes are going to fund something that doesn't really benefit us, the people that ride the transit. It's not really operated on an economic basis in the sense that I've lived in Munich, I was in the military, I lived in Munich, I lived in Heidelberg, in Boston, in New York. You always had to pay in order to access public transportation. In our city, they gave up on doing that quite a while ago for a variety of reasons. And so all the money that's going to fund one of the largest buildings in town, fanciest buildings in town, the intercity, you know, major station down there, and now this several multimillion dollar project is coming out of taxpayer money. It's not coming out of money which is being generated by fares. So this just seems like an overreach, like maybe they've got too much taxpayer money going into their pockets so they can afford to have a major redesign of a road like this. So, you know, I'm irritated about it from the perspective that it seems like there's too many taxes that are being, you know, being put into their coffers. And secondly, I'm irritated because it'll result in a more dangerous situation for those of us that live in these four neighborhoods to be able to get out onto Martin Way. So that's all I'll have to say. I'll be signing the petition along with just about everybody else that I know. Thank you for your time.
John Pettit, followed by Terry Ballard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out off Rich Road, East Olympia. I am going to start out on a positive note. I have something very positive to say about the two female Commissioners we have, because they seem to be more in line with understanding the concept of budgeting than perhaps the male population of our Commission. There's a large difference between budgeting and accounting. Those are two very different items. You don't have to put different processes all in one pot to do accounting. Accounting will handle its own. Budgeting is just a decision process about dispersing the money as needed for services. But I appreciate the fact that I had two Commissioners that were definitely in tune with actually even reading some of my emails I send in. It's a little disturbing when I watch the videos and I send in extensive emails trying to provide you with something of education, and the majority of the Board, oh, I never read the email. Well, if you're our representatives, why aren't you reading our emails? I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna start awarding, every week I'm gonna start awarding a rubber stamp award to Commissioners who do nothing more than rubber stamp and approval that some staff person decided to throw out there. It's embarrassing to not actually understand the basic concepts that you're supposed to be making decisions on. You can do a lot better. You got to study it out. Maybe you gentlemen can work on following what the women here are doing. They're getting it. That's good. I'm also really pleased that we got a new county manager, and I have great hopes that that's going to get us on a good path. Thurston County has a lot of very good employees. Many of them are not here because Thurston County pays the best compensation. They're here because they want to serve their community. And you need to respect that. But I also deal with a lot of the population out there trying to get plats and projects through. Hopefully, I'm going to get one through that's only been in process to make some five-acre lots. It's only been 10 years since he started the process, and I've had to fight with it for the last two weeks just to get an approved plat map. It has to go through four different departments instead of one spot to get all the elements done in one spot. Now, one of the other areas I was asked to talk about has to do with a process that septic design people that... There's some people that want to upgrade their septic... there's some people that want to upgrade their septic system at their property for a house that's like thirty-five years old. And to upgrade their septic system, CPED has decided, "Well, we need to do an environmental assessment about whether upgrading your system is going to be a good thing. We need to charge you four hundred and fifty dollars for us to look at that to decide whether or not we have to do something further." It's an existing septic system. Should we just be pouring this poop on the ground? We need to stop thinking that the public out here needs to be milked out of every dollar they can have. We've got to do some major cleanup, and it's not just staff's decisions, major cleanup and the processes that they're placed with. And stop thinking that we're the source of all the revenue you ever want. Please, start reading my emails, I do it for a reason. Thank you.
Terry Ballard, Mindy Rule on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I'm a thirty-five-year veteran, twenty-nine of it was towards an active-duty retirement. And I retired in two thousand twelve in Tanglewild, which is in an unincorporated Thurston County. As the person said, um, yeah, I, I, I'm concerned with our road fund. I'm concerned with the unincorporated road fund being used for general funds. When are we going to get that money back so we can improve our roads? Not here to talk about Earth Day because, you know, we eliminate plastics in our recycle. I guess that's part of Earth Day. And how's that plastic bag ban going for you? Now, we have to pay for plastic bags and paper bags. That must be a real chore there. Okay? And I'm not here to talk about the unincorporated Sheriff's Patrol Fund, which has a full-time employee of point seven per thousand, second lowest in the state. How are we paying those guys, too? Okay? They're lower than low. Okay? And it's been mentioned here in front of you. So, how did we get to the second lowest manning of our state? You, the Commissioners, have been defunding it for years? You'd rather take safety and take, take three million dollars and put it into a safety fund, which sheriffs, and take five million out of the sheriff's fund and put it into a general fund? That's passed. Okay? Also, uh, the, the proposal for movement of the sheriff, okay? He has to be at the county seat, okay? That's RCW thirty-six sixteen point ninety, point zero nine zero, and RCW thirty-six point twenty-eight point one sixty, okay? Why are you trying to move him down to, uh, family court? Family court, they tried to move Superior Court down to family court for years, okay? But they finally moved you out, okay? And as far as, uh, as far as this place is concerned with, this is illegal. This is not the county seat. The, uh, the property here was annexed in nineteen sixty-four, we all know that. We all know from Attorney General, uh, letter, uh, Attorney General opinion of, uh, November twenty-third, nineteen eighty-seven, it's wrong. Another Attorney General, uh, another, uh, thing that was cited on eighteen March two thousand four against, uh, the county, against the City of Olympia and Tomwater. They also established it then. And guess who was the record, uh, uh, record lawyer? Elizabeth Petrich. Why should she approve something that, a movement of something that she already knows exists, already lost? Okay, that's just the movement of the court. And of course, we have the, uh, another Attorney General opinion of September two thousand eight. They've been trying to move this outside the county seat. And that's in violation of Article Nine of the State Constitution, okay? Why are we, and, and an array of, uh, of RCWs for movement and planning and all that, an array of, "Don't worry, you're going to get that," okay? And Office at the County Seat, Clerk, Office at the County Seat, Prosecuting Attorney, Office at the County Seat, County Sheriff, Office of County Seat, County Treasurer. Is this the county seat? No, it's not. Okay, then you have a violation of, uh, of a meeting act, okay? And each violation is five hundred dollars, can't reduce that. And every other violation past that is a thousand dollars. When's your prosecuting attorney going to stand up and start, uh, practicing and upholding the law? I need to know that. But my letter to illicit operations outside Thurston County seat of government is addressed to the Attorney General. Guess who he's running for? Governor. Guess who all those other seats are running for? A Attorney General. They're, they're going to know all this, all these violations. Thank you.
And then I'll call for anybody who didn't get a chance to sign up.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. My name is Mindy Rule. I'm the President and CEO of the Community Foundation of South Puget Sound. I live in Olympia, Washington, off Kane Road. We're a nonprofit based in Thurston County. The Community Foundation's mission is to grow a lasting culture of generosity and well-being in the South Puget Sound through connection, leadership, and collaboration. And we exist to be the community's holder of charitable endowments for the good of this place. So, many different donors have contributed to the Community Foundation, and with that, we make grants and scholarships into the community. You may have heard of us from our online giving campaign in November, Give Local, or we are a partner in the Thurston Strong Coalition to distribute COVID-nineteen relief dollars to nonprofits. But I'm here today to extend an invitation to an event. We're holding a community conversation. It's our inaugural community conversation event. And in selecting the theme this year, we wanted to pick a topic that would resonate across our entire community, being an election year and acknowledging the realities of increased polarization locally and nationally. We're thrilled to welcome author and journalist Monica Guzman. She wrote a book called, "I Never Thought of It That Way: How to Have Fearlessly Curious Conversations in Dangerously Divided Times." And she'll talk about her book and how all of us can engage in conversations with curiosity across differences. So, this event is at the Washington Center on May twenty-second at seven o'clock. I can give you an invitation. But I also wanted to say, as elected officials, I know that all of you deal with, uh, a landscape of diverse viewpoints and complex issues. So, I'd like to thank you for your service and extend a personal invitation to our community conversation event. We're, the Community Foundation is hosting the event because we believe that inclusive civic engagement and productive dialogue across differences is vital for a functioning community, and you all play a role in that. So, thanks for hearing me, and I hope you'll join us.
Is that May twenty-second?
May twenty-second.
Thank you.
And can I pass these?
Yeah, you give it to the clerk, she'll make sure the board gets it. Thank you. Anyone, I'm looking at you, Mr. Trobridge, come on up.
Mr. Whitford is here. I don't know if my remark should come when he's speaking about what he's going to bring up, but, um...
This is your opportunity. This is your opportunity, so go ahead.
So, I've given you all some materials. The first thing I'd like you to look at is this thing here, a handout from the Patterson Lake Association, which says that a contractor is going to be selected in April, and the study is to begin in May. So, and this is the last day of April, of course. May starts tomorrow. I believe it's Herrera that's been chosen. Not surprising, since that's what they told us two years ago, and then retracted it saying, "No, it really wasn't Herrera." So, Herrera it is, um, without any opportunity to talk to the two contractors that put in bids and see which one is the best. I, I understand supposedly some people have looked at the paperwork they've submitted and voted that Herrera is the best. But I wasn't allowed to be involved in that, why not? And how were those decisions made and by whom? In any case, what was said at the meeting was that you guys are going to approve this on May fourteenth, that's two weeks from today. Is that right? I understood you were going to be discussing it today, but I don't see it on the agenda. So, in terms of process, I just want to talk about the procedure that's being used here today. And I'd like you all to look at this map. And you're all sick of looking at it except for, uh, Mr. Hernandez. But this map indicates who's included in our lake project and who isn't. So, holding the map upside right, so north is up and south is south. This big parcel over here was not included. Forty acres, five hundred feet of waterfront. Belongs to my wife and me. But yet, you're going to leave the decision now as to whether it's going to get treated to Herrera Incorporated, a company in Seattle who peddles poisons and has no expertise in law or politics. Doesn't the buck stop here with you guys? I'd say that particularly to you, Commissioner Edwards. You're always saying, "Well, we get the final decision, bring it back here when it's ripe." Well, it's ripe, this is it. Are you going to decide to include this, look at this one now, this wetland or not? And again, it wasn't included in the vote. How could you possibly include it? Take a look at this. No buildings, all timbered. And look at this map here, the elevations. This is all at sea level, if you will, at the lake level. Clear down to here, this is really all still part of the lake. Here, this map here, the green shows, that's the swamp. It covers fifty acres. It's all part of the lake, it's all an ecosystem. And, um, back to this one. You see those lily pads? Right there? Now, they haven't taken over the whole lake, have they? They're just a narrow band there. They're not invasive, they haven't wiped out possibility for moving around the lake. This is a fairly recent photo, it's a county photo. It's got my wife's name at the top because her name is on the deed. That's what I wanted to protect. And it wasn't included in the vote. How could you possibly say it should be poison? This is your chance to decide this. Why won't you? It, it seems to me that the only possible reason I can see is that you hate me and you hate lily pads. You know, what are you doing? Why is it that three of you signed things saying that all properties were included, which you knew was false? And the two new ones, I guess, are going along with that. It's fine to include properties that weren't included. Well, no, it isn't. The, the petition says all properties are included. Three times you three Commissioners have pronounced that all properties are included, uh, sea-attached map, and then here's the map. It's just basically dishonest. And if you guys aren't going to address this, then let's not hear anymore of the buck stops here.
Any other folks in the boardroom who would want to give public testimony and did not sign up to do so? Okay, is there anyone? I'm looking and seeing, I think, all, Chris Lester, perhaps? Are you somebody who'd like to give testimony?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, I think everyone else is staff. So, that will conclude public testimony. Thank you for everyone who came to write it. Next up is county manager's update. Is there anything that you're following up on, Commissioner?
Nothing to report, yes.
And we'll go to the consent, uh, agenda. We have items three A through three E. Any request to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is second, non-debatable motion. I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, those items are approved. Next up is Public Health and Social Services Department, item four A, Contract for Submerged Aquatic Vegetation Activities for Lake Management Districts. Stuart Whitford, Environmental Health Program Manager, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, this is a contract, um, that went through an RFP process a while back. And the winner of the process was Aqua Technics LLC. This is a company that's been around for a number of years doing submerged aquatic weed management, and so they're highly qualified. So, this service is for the four lake management districts that we currently have. And, um, and so, just, just kind of a note is that this contract is to provide these services, it is a fee-for-service contract. And also, it's guided foundationally by our Lake Management District Aquatic Weed Prescription, which was developed by our PIVMAC Committee, um, over a lot of time. And so, I made copies, but I forgot it was double-sided, so I was going to give you. But I'll provide those, too, you can kind of read through it. But if you read through it, um, the key thing to note is that the first things that come up under control options for aquatic weed prescriptions are manual techniques to include digging, hand-pulling, weed blankets. Then there's mechanical techniques. So, again, these are the things you're supposed to consider before you ever apply anything, mechanical techniques. Diver dredging, which is using a diver to do some dredging. Cultural techniques, biological techniques, and then finally, chemical techniques. So, the way, the way this is structured is we're only supposed to get to chemical if the planning and the process indicates that chemical is the only particular solution to use. So, I just wanted you guys to know that. So, that this contract is bound by this document that the Board of Health has approved. Okay? So, today, I'm just asking you to approve us to execute and sign the contract. Contract, uh, will go through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Go ahead.
Who ultimately decides what techniques are employed at the, at the lakes? Is that decided by the Lake Management District themselves?
The, the four Lake Management Districts are in partnership, you know, with the county, and so, we all partner on, on those decisions. Long and Lawrence already have an aquatic weed management plan, and Patterson and Offutt, you were, because he was referring to a recent RFP to develop integrated aquatic vegetation management plans for Offutt and Patterson Lake. That went through an RFP process, Herrera was the one that won that. There was two submittals. That is a planning process to guide how those lakes are going to manage aquatic weeds. But again, it all goes back to this prescription. If there's going to be chemicals applied, there's a lot of detail on there as to what chemicals can be used and how.
And is it true that we, my understanding is that Thurston County slate of chemicals is narrower than the Department of Ecology's?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my question, sir, thank you very much for asking us.
So, the, the residents of these lakes, if they want to be involved in the decision-making, would you say that their best avenue to do that would be to be involved in the Lake Management District governments?
Yes.
Since they're the, that's, that's their forum.
Go to the meeting.
For being leaders and deciding what goes on at the lakes is to participate in the Lake Management District?
Exactly. Exactly. That is what I would encourage anyone to do because these are natural systems. And by no means do you want to have something applied that's not necessary or absolutely necessary to accomplish that particular job for reasons that Brett has mentioned.
My understanding on this particular action item is that we are, we are saying that, to the extent that any of the lakes need to, you know, go through the slate and need to drop to the chemical application, this is the contractor that will do it. We're not saying what's going to happen on any particular lake. This is just simply identifying, well, this is the contractor that would be gone to if that is necessary.
That's correct, this is a fee-for-service. So, so, for example, if a lake wants to process a work, whatever, something, it all goes through County Review essentially to make sure that it adheres to all the different rules and regulations and things like that.
Yep.
The folks that end up doing the application or, uh, at least those that would be involved in the decision with those folks that do the application, are they professionals in their field that deal, that's their thing?
Yes. So, to apply these aquatic herbicides, you have to have a license that's relicensed by the state. And then you have to report to the state on an annual basis, and they keep track of any violations or citations or things like that. And the contractors that submitted for this RFP did not. They are licensed, and they had no violations or other issues to bring to bear. So, they are, they are bound by the license, much like an engineer is bound by their engineering license.
Thank you.
On that prescription that you showed, uh, there's been one, one chemical in particular that's been named by our resident?
Glyphosate.
Yeah, is that even on the prescription?
Yes, it's, um, it's last. And I can read you what it says, um, if I can find it. So, I'll just read it to you. So, glyphosate or Aqua Master is a contact herbicide that works like a systemic, a systemic... So glyphosate or Aqua Master is a contact herbicide that works like a systemic on lilies and emergent plants. And the prescription is, I'll just read the bottom, which kind of describes our position on this. Thurston County recognized some scientific studies have concluded the use of glyphosate products have carcinogenic potential. The risks of spot spraying with these products is considered to be low, provided the applicator uses personal protection equipment, which includes chemically resistant gloves in addition to sleeve shirt, long pants, socks, and shoes, and all other label precautions are followed. And so if it is used, it is guided by this to protect the environment, but also to protect the worker. The people in California that were injured by this were primarily workers that were knowingly exposed to glyphosate.
And when you say spot spraying, it's because my understanding was this could not be used in anything that would be like submerged vegetation in, under the water. It has to be applied in a place where it can be contained, which is basically something out in the, out of the water.
Spot spray, yes.
Yeah. I just want to make sure spot spray means what I think it means.
But I can tell you, by listing it last?
Yeah.
The intent is here that it is legal to use, but the intent is that, well, we're going to make darn sure if you are using it, that it's going to be used according to label instructions and to safety requirements.
Can you try Klaus?
Well, you were reading from, is that in the AIS? Is that the contract?
No, that's why I omitted that, and I should have.
Okay, because I was trying to find it, but, okay.
Said he would distribute it.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Stuart. Is there a motion? Mr. Trowbridge, we're not, it's not the time for this discussion. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the professional services contract for Lake Management District's submerged aquatic vegetation control to Aqua Technics LLC of Centralia, Washington, on a fee-for-service basis as outlined in the rate schedule, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve a professional services fee-for-service contract with Aqua Technics LLC of Centralia, Washington. Is there a discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Forward, favor, one abstention. That motion carries. Thank you, Stuart. Next is Public Health and Social Services Professional Services Contract T O three dash O two one three dash two three. Gretchen Toller, Program Manager from Public Health, to explain to us this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gretchen Toller from Public Health. I am seeking approval for the Professional Services Lewis County Contract T zero three zero two one three two three for the purchase of Nurse Family Partnership Program Health Services for the amount of two hundred, two hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And this is for the period of January first of twenty twenty-four through December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. And this funds community health nurses to continue serving families through the Nurse Family Partnership Program in Lewis County. Nurse Family Partnership works with mothers to provide support, resources, and coaching to help families have the best outcomes.
Questions for Gretchen? None? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the professional services contract with Lewis County T zero three dash zero two one three dash two three for the purchase of Nurse Family Partnership Health Services for twenty-five families in Lewis County in the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty first, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve this professional services contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Public Works five A, Contract Award for Asset Management Information System Needs Assessment and Requirements Documentation. And we have Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item before you for consideration is a contract to award a request for a consultant to assist with developing a needs assessment and requirements documentation for a new asset management system. Public Works currently uses Viewworks as our asset management information system. We use this to manage our extensive network of infrastructure assets. We use it to record maintenance and repair activities, plan and schedule work, and perform asset lifecycle analysis to replace our assets at the optimum time, guard against asset failure, and ensure continuity of essential operations. The system that we've been using, Viewworks, we've used for over fifteen years. It has served us well in the past, but it is no longer meeting our needs. The changes in Viewworks organizational structure have resulted in inadequate software development service, inadequate software development service and support functionalities. Additionally, the system configuration changes have produced compatibility issues with our GIS system, which is an essential foundation for a functioning asset management system. So we are currently at a standstill with that software. Public Works has worked in collaboration with the IT department to put forward a needs assessment and requirements documentation RFP. We had two respondents to that. We selected the, the firm before you in consideration today, Barry Dunn of Portland, Maine, and are asking for authorization to execute that contract.
Any questions for Jennifer? Director Walker? Nope. Is there a motion?
I move to award the contract services, contract for business analyst consulting services for an asset management information system, needs and requirements assessment to Barry Dunn of Portland, Maine. Am I reading the right one?
Yeah.
Okay. In the amount of ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ten dollars, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, up to ten percent of the contract, nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, or an aggregate of one hundred and nine thousand two hundred and forty-one.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to award this business analyst consulting services contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is five B, Interlocal Agreement for Antiochic Materials Sales for Road Operations, Tomwater School District Number Thirty-three, Mike Lowman, Road Operations Manager, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thurston County Public Works Road Operations Division produces anti-icing materials for use in winter road operations, providing for public safety and welfare. These anti-icing materials are utilized by Thurston County and, as quantities allow, available for purchase by neighboring jurisdictions and agencies. The Tomwater School District Number Thirty-three has a need for anti-icing materials in support of their winter operations, but does not have the ability to produce the materials. This interlocal agreement provides a mechanism for Tomwater School District Thirty-three to purchase anti-icing materials from Thurston County for road operations. The unit price charged to the agency will fluctuate and is based on the cost for supplies, equipment, and labor to produce a specific material. There's no minimum order amount in agreement to sell anti-icing material is at the discretion of Public Works. The ILA will be for a term of five years. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve the ILA between Thurston County and Tomwater School District Thirty-three. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Nope. Okay, very good.
Move to approve the interlocal agreement between Thurston County and Tomwater School District Number Thirty-three for the sale of anti-icing materials for road operations for the term of five years.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the interlocal agreement regarding anti-icing materials. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next up is five C, Public Works striping paint purchase. Becky Kahn, Traffic Engineering and Operations Manager.
That's right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Becky Kahn, the Traffic Engineering and Operations Manager with Thurston County Public Works. Public Works is responsible for striping approximately six hundred miles of roadway each year using twelve thousand gallons of yellow paint and fifteen thousand gallons of white paint. The paint lines on Thurston County's arterial and collector roadways are refreshed annually to ensure compliance with minimum retroreflectivity standards as outlined in the federal and state mandated Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD. This refresh results in improved visibility and enhanced public safety on our roadways. Public Works intends to piggyback off Pierce County's competitively bid contract with Aramsco for the paint which meets the technical, the technical specification requirements of the rapid dry waterborne paint currently in use in Thurston County. The unit rate is sixteen dollars and five cents per gallon for a total cost of four hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. The cost of this paint is included in the twenty twenty-four Public Works budget. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Becky? The paint? Nope, is there a motion?
Yes, there is. I move to authorize the Director of Public Works to purchase traffic striping paint from Aramsco in the amount of four hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents, along with a ten percent contingency.
Second.
Motion in second to authorize the traffic striping paint purchase. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One more item from Public Works, Resolution for Temporary Closure of Black Lake Belmore Road Southwest between Black Lake Boulevard Southwest and Sap Road Southwest. And you're not Matt Enzelman, you're Brian Meyer, right?
I'm not.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Brian Meyer, I'm the engineer, or design manager for Public Works. Public Works is requesting to temporarily close Black Lake Belmore Road between Black Lake Boulevard and Sap Road to accommodate the construction of the Black Lake Belmore Bridge Approach Repair Project. This project was prioritized by Public Works because the approaches to Black Lake Bridge near Percival Creek have settled more than two feet. Safety concerns have, we, which caused safety concerns for vehicles and pedestrians along with bicyclists. Due to the proximity of surrounding bodies of water, environmental sensitive areas, and the need for extended, extended pile driving with large machinery, it was determined that the temporary closing the road is the safest, least expensive, and quickest option to successfully complete this project. The repair includes removing forty-five hundred cubic yards of soil, drive five hundred and forty timber piles, and replaces soil with structurally reinforced fill. The closure will last up to twelve consecutive weeks between June first and October thirty first, and this section of Black Lake Belmore has an average daily volume of forty-six hundred vehicles per day. The detour route will be established with the appropriate signage, and the total detour length will be four and a half miles and take approximately eight minutes. The detour includes Sap Road, RW Johnson, Twenty-first Avenue, and Black Lake Boulevard. A communication plan has been established to notify stakeholders, including local, schools, residents, and emergency responders. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brian? Yeah, can I try words?
You know, I don't have any questions, but I think the public ought to know that on many of these issues that we're addressing today, we've had a lot of conversations over a long period of time often. So, thank you, Brian, for the.
Thank you.
Condescending that down, getting it right. Nobody's got any questions. Then look, I got.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the county, was there?
Nope. Think you're good.
The county engineer to temporarily close Black Lake Belmore Road Southwest between Black Lake Boulevard Southwest and Sap Road Southwest for up to a twelve consecutive week time period between June first, twenty twenty-four, and October thirty first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in seconded for this resolution regarding temporary road closure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. All right, next up is Sheriff's Office. We have two somewhat related items. Item six A is single source purchase grappler. And we have Sheriff Sanders here to, he briefed us several times, so I don't know how much is needed, but anything you'd like to say in advance of the consideration of the item?
Yeah, happy to address you each again. Good afternoon, Board. So for the grappler device, of course, is the net device that attaches to the front of the patrol vehicles. As you guys know, on June sixth, the voters put forth Initiative two-on-one-three, which restores peace officer authority to pursue for any law violation in Washington State. As such, the Sheriff's Office is going to resume pursuing people who flee from us to try and get our criminal stuff under control here in this county. However, with that being said, we also recognize that there are a number of risks that are inherent to police pursuits, especially those that engage at high speed. So with that, we put forward these two budget proposals. The first one was the grappler for approximately forty-eight thousand dollars to equip six of our police vehicles with the net device to help us assist in capturing these individuals.
Questions from the board for the sheriff? I guess I have a question. You, you said budget request, but in a sense, this is a request for a single source purchase, and it's within your already appropriated budget authority.
Yes, my apologies, Chair. This is for single source, which has been approved by the auditor.
Okay, any questions about this item? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the single source purchase of six grappler units from Stock Enterprise for the amount of approximately forty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars plus shipping and handling.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Oh, go ahead, Wayne.
I just want to thank the sheriff and his department for looking at, looking into alternatives to, you know, like when, when the law changes and it goes back and it allows you to start pursuing again, this is, you know, and we heard from RISK, and they were, they were in support of this. This is, this is, this is you looking out and trying things that are outside the box to ensure that you can do your job safely and, you know, it's not, you know, the, the Washington State spoke, and they said, hey, we're a little leery of, you know, the, these pursuits. I, I do feel that it was a failed experiment to basically abolish pursuits essentially. But, uh, you know, we do have to go back to pursuing people that have committed crimes. But you're looking at alternatives that are safer and outside the box, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fornaran. Again, we're going back what we're trying to move forward at the same time. A little bit of both. I just think there has to be balance in this.
Can you try Klaus?
Yes, I had a comment. I first wanted to thank both my seatmates, county managers, and the sheriff for allowing me extra time to ask questions. I know we've gone over this item several times, and a lot of that was due to additional questions and research that I had and that I wanted to look into. I, I'm going to abstain from the vote today, primarily due to fiscal concerns. I do commend you for looking into safer alternatives. I think that that's very important. As we discussed a couple of times, your office is seeking grant funding through, I think, Department of Commerce to secure additional units beyond those that would be purchased during this pilot. I, my, my concerns is that relying on vacancy savings will provide short-term coverage for the expense, but could negatively impact the general fund in the long term as we go into contract negotiations later this year. But I will be working with budget staff and county managers to understand that long-term impact, because there's been a lot of confusion around that. So that's what I'll be focusing on, is trying to figure out what the long-term impact might be, which is why I'm abstaining. But I do want to thank you for trying to look into additional funding sources and allowing me extra time to ask questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sheriff, I had a question on the grant that Commissioner Klaus referred to. What's the scope of that grant, like meaning? And what I'm thinking is, you know, you're getting these as kind of a pilot, and if they don't work very well or whatever, I mean, can you do other things with that grant? Or is that grant specifically for grapplers or?
It's for police pursuit alternative technology.
Okay, so you might be able to pivot.
I believe some agencies have purchased flock cameras with them. We saw Spokane use the money for helicopter stuff. So you kind of have this wide diversity of anything that can be used to help safely bring pursuits to an end.
Okay, and you'll be evaluating that as you see how the, okay. Commissioner Mihia?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank the sheriff for having multiple sessions with the board on these two items, and for really walking us through the process, bringing RISK here and hearing from RISK that the riskful was willing to put money on this, two thousand for this year, I believe, and five thousand dollars for next year, and seeing the. And seeing the rate of accidents that we've had with our patrol cars, not that we've caused them, but just having total cars that, you know, now we have to buy, purchase two new ones. And the expense of those, you know, for me, this is an alternative that we can see if it works. I like the approach of making it a pilot program instead of just equipping all the cars to seeing if it, if it works for our community, so you know, we'll see once the grappler comes on board, and I look forward to kind of seeing the cars once they're equipped and seeing what they look like on the road.
Absolutely, and, and you know, especially for both these units, another piece of this is they don't, they don't change the appearance of the patrol car. They're both going to still have pushbars on them, the Star Chase unit is very discreet up in the bumper, the grappler just looks like a normal pushbar until it folds down. But again, I appreciate it, and, you know, a lot of this stuff is very technological. I remember trying to describe to you guys like I was an air traffic control signaler. Much easier to provide some video footage on what it looks like and how it will be used. But yeah, I, I think from our perspective, we're just excited to try and get as many tools out on the road as possible. We know that police pursuits do result in injury and death sometimes, and so any time that we can invest in this stuff to prevent that, I think is a pretty good investment on the behalf of the county.
Did I see you, Commissioner Edwards? Nope, okay, then we had a motion and a second, so if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, okay, that motion carries. Don't go anywhere, because six B is single source purchase Star Chase, and again, this is another piece of technology, then anything you'd like to say?
As previously disclosed to you guys, this is a more of a technical IT kind of way of capturing criminals who flee. It uses a GPS DART that does not require a warrant due to exigency by attaching it to the back of their vehicle while they're fleeing, and then it allows us to actually disengage the pursuit, turn our emergency lights off in some scenarios, and follow at a distance, or in cases where we are pursuing someone who cannot be let go at any cost, like a murder suspect, or a rape, or a robbery suspect, it just gives us a little bit of an insurance policy to tag the vehicle, continue the pursuit. Sometimes criminals do get away, especially when they start driving really reckless and deputies have to pull off a little bit. It provides that extra insurance policy that we're going to have additional leads to capture that person, so this is, you know, between the two technologies, this is the more kind of finicky, a little more technological, whereas the grappler is a little more rudimentary. But nonetheless, I think having the two diversified pilots to run on each other and see which one works best, cold weather, wet weather, nighttime, daytime, will give us an idea in the future about whether or not these technologies are truly feasible and we should continue to invest in them.
Questions on Star Chase? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the single source purchase of five Star Chase units from Star Chase for the amount of approximately forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars plus shipping and handling.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the single source purchase, any discussion? Three, none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Yes, okay, so that motion carries, both motions four, zero with one extension, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next up is Superior Court Toxicology Services Contract for Superior Court Programs, Sabrina Craig is with us, I see. Good afternoon, Sabrina, can you brief the Board briefly on this item?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a contract with Aver Health, which is a toxicology laboratory providing forensic toxicology services. This contract will provide those services to the Superior Court Programs, the DUI Court, Family Recovery Court, and to our family court, individuals who are ordered to have toxicology as a result of their family matter. We, this contract is funded through our Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds, as well as our Treatment Sales Tax Funds. Yeah, if you notice that, I think the request was for the initial contract will be a fourteen-month contract which brings that contract period into alignment with the memorandum of understanding for our Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funding, which will be the primary funding source for this, as DUI Court is the largest user of this service. And we have requested the Board authorize the Court Administrator to execute this contract.
Questions for Sabrina? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to approve the contract with Aver Test LLC, DBA, Aver Health, for the amount of one hundred and ten thousand for the term of May first, two thousand and twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, for toxicology services for Superior Court Programs, and authorize Superior Court Administrator to execute the contract and up to two one-year renewals and any other amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the contract with Aver Test LLC, any discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Sabrina. Next up is Commissioner reports on any work sessions, meetings, community events, anybody want to start? Commissioner Edwards, how about you?
My last week's activities, Fire Commissioners, EMS Council, folks over at the Medical Equipment Bank with, with the Chair at least, and I will say they've got a real program going over there, they're located over at Lilly and Martin Way. And they serve our adult population that's in need of medical equipment of any, they don't have every type, but most types. So if you're so inclined that you might need that type of service, you could stop in and see those folks. They're also in the senior news, they've got some advertisements in there, and I just think it's a, it's a good community service. They are raising money to try and better the service, so I'll just put a little plug in, if you're so inclined, you could stop there and see if they need some help, and they need volunteers as well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mejia?
I'll go till next week. Attended, well, this morning I attended the Intercity Transit Executive Meeting, just planning the agenda for this Wednesday. Attended yesterday the Disheaths Planning and Governance Meeting one-on-one, and I had Chairman Mansur attend with me. And then, not having to do with any kind of board work, but I was very excited this weekend to attend the Procession of Species and the Luminary Processions, just really great community events. And they did such a great job. Last week, attended Crab Board Meeting, Thursday, Friday, and just really want to give a big shout out to our staff, both Jennifer Walker and Matt Unzelman, they did a presentation, and they were kind of just presenting on Thurston County and the state of affairs, and they stayed within their time limit, and they did a really great job in offering very concise information, so very proud moment for me. Attended the PAC Mountain Board Meeting, also attended the TRPC Subcommittee Meeting as we were going through the Executive Director's Performance Evaluation. Attended the Regional Housing Council as the alternate, attended the Tom Water Education Foundation Event, as well as the Capital Land Trust Event with Commissioner Mansur. Attended the Washington State Office of Public Defense Listening Session and presented Thurston County's Point of View, and then also attended the Boston Harbor Open House for the utilities. So overall, just had a lot of internal meetings as well, as well as external.
Commissioner Fournair?
I thought I was busy until I heard that. So the EDC gave a really good report, so I wanted to pass that out to all of you. The, most notably, the New Market Skills Center Executive Director gave a report, and they are like trying to get creative about how they can expand their campus. They've got, they've got a lot of kids that want to take some of these tech classes and trade school classes, and they've, and so like, I'm trying to rattle around how we could support them and maybe include them in some of our lobbying efforts, but I think we'd maybe first want to invite Matt Ishler to come and give his presentation on what they do maybe, and then we could kind of figure out how we could line up behind him, because I think it's something that we could, we would all appreciate and probably get behind. So I could provide more information on that, or help maybe the county manager arrange something like that. I did a ride-along with CPED Code Enforcement Staff, I like saying code enforcement, they say code compliance. I don't think I could ever reconcile that in my head. It was a great ride-along, we spent about three hours cruising the county and looking at various cases and talking about the processes they have to go through. I found it valuable, if anybody else is interested in what code enforcement does, or code compliance does, they were very hospitable and they had a good time showing off what they do, so reach out to Sandy Norton if that's something you're interested in. Spent the week meeting with various department heads and directors, county manager, Medic One Director, Public Health. Attended the Chehalis Basin Partnership Meeting, where US Fish and Wildlife Service gave an in-depth presentation, it was about two and a half hours, on their Oregon Spotted Frog Efforts, and I really enjoyed it, it was, it was very informative. That's another, if we're interested in, I've got the folks' numbers, and it was actually a fun presentation. The dude that gave it, his name's Teal, like he was hilarious, so it was a fun presentation too. So if you guys want it, I could, I could bring that in, I don't know if we need to spend two and a half hours doing it, but I could, I could sit through it again, as odd as that is. And in that meeting, I volunteered my daughter for a job to be a stream flow monitor for the Scatter Creek Stream Flow Study that's being done, and she's pretty excited about that, so like throughout the summer, she'll be able to look out in the backyard and like she'll have an app where she can monitor what the stream's doing at our house and at my, my parents' house, so that was kind of cool. She's not getting paid, it's volunteer. And then also, I was asked by Wash State Association of Counties to serve as the Western Washington Rep for a jail and juvenile detention facility modernization task force that's being done with the Ruckelhaus Center. This is part of a series of budget provisos that was passed, that were passed by the state legislature to come up with strategies for adult and juvenile detention moving forward in Washington State, and I have, I have agreed to participate in that, so that'll be something that I may be sharing information on as we go forward.
Very good, Commissioner Close.
Well, mine is short and sweet compared to everyone else's. As far as committee meetings, there were not very many for me over this last two weeks. I had a Regional Housing Council meeting, and I also attended with Commissioner Mansur the Washington County Community Corrections Center in Oregon. That was pretty interesting. Their correction center is across the street from their jail, and they provide a structured living environment with supports for employment and counseling, and they also offer a variety of life skills programs, which I thought was an interesting model. And as we continue conversations about a potential regional correction center here in Thurston County, I will be kind of using that model to inform my perspective as we move forward in those conversations. I also met with some constituents regarding like management districts and tenant protections, and later on this week, I'll be meeting with the Animal Services Director, as well as the Emergency Services Director.
Very good, I had a busy couple of weeks. Attended with Commissioner Klaus this Hillsborough Facility, which I'd been hearing about for many years, because the county sent a contingent of folks in two thousand and thirteen down there, including the prosecutor, the mayor of Olympia, and county commissioners. So we went back ten years later to see how it's operating, and as a former public defender that spent a lot of time in various jails, it's just a totally different situation, I mean, you know, as we walked through the halls and there are no bars, there are no, folks are just kind of respecting the colors of carpet on the ground in terms of where they need to be, and everywhere we walked by, people were waving at us and curious of what we were doing, and just the, the whole energy in the place was different, and so I thought that was notable, as well as a lot of the mechanical aspects of it were really interesting. I had a finance committee meeting, I attended the Capital Land Trust Event, which celebrated their one-hundredth property acquisition. This is in random order, Capital Land, sorry, Capital Lake Disheaths Estuary with Commissioner Mejia, an open house with Commissioner Edwards for the Medical Equipment Bank, meetings with TRL Library Board members about issues going on with the Library Board, attended the Fry Cove Earth Day Event, where we planted, where we cleaned out beds and did some cleanup at Fry Cove Park. Did a presentation with our Climate Program Manager, Rebecca Harvey, to the Gateway Rotary Club, explaining to the community members there what the Switch Is On campaign is about. Attended both processions of the species, which was awesome, the first daytime procession in five years. Attended the open house for the Tammy Shannon Public Works Updates, kind of similar to the Commissioner Mejia's Boston Harbor one, there was one the next day for the upgrades that we're doing in the Tammy Shannon neighborhood. Attended and gave remarks at Jane Mountjoy Vining's Retirement, thirty-three years with Thurston County as our kind of water quality specialist. It was great to see, give her a positive send-off, she's been a huge, huge part of Thurston County's environmental health work for decades, literally, so that was cool. A lot had a retreat all day last Friday, where we went through strategic planning, got a lot of key issues kind of nailed down in terms of our future direction, and how a lot's going to be involved in the community on things like affordable housing, on things like habitat restoration, on things like chemicals of emerging concern, on things like re-what we clean water. I did not attend the State Building Code Council Meeting that I should have attended, or the Steady Meeting because of a family emergency, so if you'd like to know what happened in the Building Code Council, I'm still getting caught up on that, I was not able to attend. So with that, we come to the item eight B, County Manager reviewing our combined schedule for the next week.
Great, thank you so much, Board. So on Wednesday, May first, from nine to twelve, we have a board work session. Part of that work session, we have our new employee orientation. Then from two to four-thirty, we have another board work session. As part of that, we have a Housing Authority Presentation. And then on Thursday, May second, we have South Sound Military Community Partnership, Elected Officials Council from eight to ten. And there is an event on Sunday, May fifth, from one to three, the celebration of the League of Women's Voters DRC Event. Then on Monday, May sixth, from ten to twelve, is a board work session. And as part of that, we have Thurston Two Thousand Forty-Five Quarterly Check-In. There's, from twelve to one, we have a Washington State, it's WASAC Virtual Assembly, and then two to four, we have a Commissioner's Check-In, and then we're back on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the county managers?
I do, the SS MCP Elected Officials Council is I'm covering, I believe, that one for Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Klaus.
What day is that, I'm sorry?
That's the May second, does that one need to be on the master calendar?
Only one Commissioner?
I think, I believe so, I think, Wayne, did you say?
It's on my calendar, but I might go, I might not go there, they're doing something down south that I was
Okay. So then it looks like it's just me, so.
So we wouldn't have it on there?
Okay.
Thanks for asking, though, appreciate you checking.
Do you have a session tomorrow morning, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
We'll ask the Vice Chair to lead that, possibly won't be in attendance tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've come to the end of the agenda, and we're adjourned.